Call the City of Apache Junction Council meeting to order. Invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Struble.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered this together this very warm evening to perform city business. We continue to ask for your oversight for us and our staff as we continue to maintain our community that all of us enjoy. This is also an evening that we all have the ability to exercise our rights and responsibilities for casting our votes. We are all thankful for the foresight of our founding fathers for this nation to introduce this experiment in our form of government to elect our leadership. We thank everyone that have cast their ballots. We again want to express our thanks to our first responders as they continue to protect us, our belongings, and our way of life. We extend our thanks to our military members and their families wherever they are serving throughout the world. Protect them all and bring them home safe each and every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the agenda be accepted as presented and the minutes of the regular meetings of July 21st be approved and that Resolution Number 20-28 be approved committing local funds from the general government grants and subsidies funds in the amount of $62,181 for Saguaro Drive roadway improvements as part of the FY 2021 CDBG regional account application to the Arizona Department of Housing.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Are there any announcements or current events? We'll start with Robin.
Not this week, thank you.
Robert.
I just want to wish everybody running in an election today luck. We've all been there. It's not an easy thing to do. It's going to be one of those nights.
Krista.
Just good luck to all the candidates running.
Chip.
Not tonight.
Gail.
I have a couple of updates from our local community development corporation on some of the projects, even though it's as hot as everyone knows it. In July, we completed a project with four youths from the organization Just Serve, which are volunteers. We've had two board members and another volunteer. We did two residential cleanups that took two dump trailers and about 40 hours total of time. And a big thanks to Jim Humphries, who's one of our new board members who took the lead on this. In August, we have a gentleman who is on hospice and a veteran who wants to stay in his home until he passes, but he has a roof leak. And Efficiency Roofing, one of our local AJ companies, has stepped up to do the roof repair for free. So a big thank you to Efficiency Roofing. We've done several other trimming and garbage removal of some homes. And our Make a Difference Day is going to be 10/10/2020, which is kind of an easy date to remember. We're going to have four similar projects, one at the focal point, one at the Boys and Girls Playground Cleanup that says it's the Field of Dreams, but it looks more like the Field of Nightmares, Silly Mountain Botanical Trail Cleanup, and two possibly private home cleanups. So the website is up, which is Apache Junction CDC, and we need volunteers to sign up as well as we can take donations to help with the cost of the cleanup. Thank you.
Councilmember Struble.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all of the people out there, individuals, groups, nonprofits, churches. As we all know, it's been hot for a long time. It seems like forever, but especially during this time of the excessive heat warnings and stuff, you have a lot of people out there providing water, providing shelter, providing food. And it's a great example of what Apache Junction comes out to do when people are in need. So I just want to throw out a big kudos to all the people in the nonprofits and the churches that are out there doing that. Thank you.
So yes, it's Election Day, and the way I figure it, at least two of us won't be up here after January. So enjoy us while you can. And still, middle of summer, it's tough to make a living anyway, but keep trying to support local businesses with carryout, the ones that aren't open. Going to be a lot of people that can't keep it going, so hopefully everything gets opened up soon. City manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick report that Janine Elan and Jill, they are working feverishly through the small business assistance and nonprofit loan and trying to do all we can to help get the word out for the groups. And we've had another successful week of applicants, and we will keep you posted. We have our first checks already starting to go out. And so we have about-
There's still money left?
There's still money left, yep, yep. Keep coming, keep trying, keep applying, and it goes to the end of August for the time to apply.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report, Your Honor, for tonight.
Okay, public hearings, we actually have two. We're going to put these together, and they are Resolution 2024 and 1492 regarding noise. And we talked extensively about this last night at the work session. Joel, can you kick this off?
Not too much to say, except that last night, council made some directions on the current draft that is online. And the understanding that I had was a red line will come back to you for the 18th, and that is a public hearing. Unless you want to do a work session, also, we can do that. I didn't really get a consensus on that. So I need to know that and need to know if you want to have the emergency clause in it still. We can take that out now. If you just say, "Take it out," we can take it out if you didn't like. You don't have to do a motion on that. Also, there is a public hearing tonight, so anybody who wants to speak on it may. Just the public should know that that is still a draft, and there is going to be some changes based on last night, so they, hopefully they saw last night. And if they have any comments, they could comment on what happened last night.
So yes, I would still welcome their comments. So let's go to the public hearing now. If there's anyone that would like to speak on these two items, now is the time to do that. And we had Jeff Bartlett, who wanted to speak later, but go ahead and do it now. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First thing I'd like to say is I don't agree with this emergency clause here. I don't think we should be pushing this through really quick. I've been opposing that. Another thing I'd like to say is that we're going through a pandemic here. Businesses have been regulated, and I don't oppose, I'm not for any more regulations. And then, give me a second here. And then I think there are existing ordinances. I oppose any new ordinances right now. And I don't agree with the use of these decibel meters, and I feel that we shouldn't be paying for this. And then I feel that this needs to be simplified. I think there's a lot more work to do on this here. Thank you.
Just for the record, we always get the address, too, if we could.
Name and address, please.
Jeff Bartlett, 108 North Meridian.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And now we can discuss. So the, about going to another work session, is that an actual vote, or can we just do that?
Is that part of the continuance motion?
It'd be part of a continue.
There'd be a motion to continue until state certain, but you could include a work session if you want a recommendation, and we can do it on the Monday, the 17th. Or if you don't think you need a work session, you can just do it on the 18th, and that would be a public hearing.
I'm thinking we still have a lot of work to do, and we should have a work session.
I'll agree.
So the motion should include the 17th. And if you want, I mean, I think there was a request to get this done before September. If there's, there's probably, I can tell you, I worked on it today, and I actually have the first draft, not ready for you, but ready for staff to look at. And there's a lot less colors. It's just basically some strikeouts and some yellows instead of the other two colors. And it's, it's not 19 pages anymore. It's a lot less.
And the, the issue of it being an emergency clause.
Yes.
Would that be decided tonight, or will that be voted on on that?
You could just get, just give me a consensus tonight if you want that taken out of the current draft. Because it's just a draft, and I can certainly do that so that when you see it, it will not have the emergency clause. And therefore, if it passes, it would then be effective within 30 days.
Can you explain the emergency clause so people understand what that is?
Sure. Under Arizona law, under Title 19, I think it's 19-142B, I believe. It might be A, but it might be B. I can't remember. For zoning cases, you can, you cannot do any emergency clause, but for other ones, you may. And what it is, it's the legislative purpose of saying, "We believe this is an emergency for the peace, health, and safety of the city, and it needs to be effective immediately upon passage." That's basically what it is. And that's all the statute says, and it's totally up to the city council under a federal case that was decided, I believe, in, I forget what year. So that's what you can do. You can decide that this is immediately necessary, and we want to do that, or you can say, "No, it'll be effective in 30 days." And that also would give the police department time to purchase the decibel readers.
So I would, I would say no to the emergency clause.
Joel, just so people understand, it's not an emergency pushing this through quickly. It's when we do finalize it, come to a vote, and if we do pass it, if the clause is there, it would come, it would be, become effective immediately or the day after, whatever, as opposed to 30 days after the passage.
Correct. And something else I should advise you, you can also put a clause in there where you pick the effective date if it's beyond 30 days. You can also do that. I don't know if you need to do that, but that is one of your options.
Chip, did I hear you say no to the emergency clause?
That's right, yeah, I do. I don't think we need it.
I agree.
I agree also. So.
So it shall be, it shall be taken out then, until the next version you'll see will not, will have it, will not have it.
Your Honor? Your Honor?
Yes, Krista.
I just wanted to make a comment so we have some clarification for the public that may have some questions in regards to why we're doing this. We have a, we have a situation where, right now, complaints can be made against a residence or a business for noise, nuisance, and there's no clarification or definition or a way to define what a noise nuisance is. And so the purpose of, that the council's trying to, what we're trying to accomplish is create a situation where the ambiguity is taken out of that situation, because what might be a noise, bothersome noise to me, may not be a noise, a bothersome noise to the vice mayor and so, and the next person, and the next person. So this is to simply put some clarity so that if there are complaints made, it's not subjective, there's no question.
Okay, I hear you picking on my hearing.
Yes. Okay, so are we ready for a motion?
May I get a clarification on that first?
Sure.
Joel, can the two be combined for a continuance motion?
Yes, if you're going to pick a date.
If I name both?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I am.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I move that Resolution Number 20-24 and ordinance number 1492 be continued to a work session on Monday, August 17, 2020, and a regular session on Tuesday, August 18, 2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
So was that only the first one?
That was both.
That was both together, okay. So, presentation and discussion on Resolution Number 2027, Renewing the Old West Highway Redevelopment Area. Elan.
Mayor, members of the council, my name's Elan Ballander, economic, senior economic development specialist for the city. Here today to offer an item for discussion only. Public hearing will be in the near future. Let me get this. On the Old West Highway redevelopment area, if you all will recall, we, city council passed this, or adopted this resolution, redevelopment area in May of 2018. And they adopted a plan in regards to that. Arizona Legislature passed ARS 426209F, which required any of these redevelopment areas that were also overlaid with a single central business district to be renewed before October 1st of 2020, or else they would go into a five-year renewal period. These redevelopment areas are typically in a 10-year renewal period. If we pass this, or renew it before October 1st, 2020, it will slide back into a 10-year renewal period instead of dropping to a five. So that's, that's the purpose of renewing this, this month. The public hearing for the renewal is scheduled for August 18th, I believe it is. Is that correct? Yeah, August 18th. So there is no action required today. Just as a refresher, the boundaries, there's a map that's been set out through public notice to all of the residents and landowners in the area that own land here. The red outline is the boundaries of the redevelopment area. The hashed yellow is basically the downtown, what we consider a downtown core area. We can go through the RDA findings and that if the council is interested. Nothing has changed in regards to the findings. Some minor improvements have occurred, sidewalks, streets, street improvements, some light improvements. We've also had some improvements along the median and, and some private development that's occurred. So tonight, just bringing this to you for discussion and any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions?
Can you explain to the audience, the people out there listening, why this is important for us to even be looking at this, reviewing it and stuff?
Yes, Councilmember Struble, and the audience, the purpose of redevelopment area gives the city the authority to expend CDBG funds, which was referred to actually earlier in the meeting, for some street projects, but it allows us to use these federal funds that come in in the form of grants to improve areas that are in need of, of infrastructure types of improvement, so often streets, lights, sidewalks, and such. And this just gives us the authority to expend those funds in this area.
Robin.
The table that you have on pages 30 through 35, has none of this changed over the last two years?
Let's see. Are you referring to the pages of the plan?
No, the buildings and their condition.
There are some minor changes. There were a couple lots that had, so for example, where Dutch Brothers was, there was a building that was taken down. There have been some developments that have occurred on lots where buildings were taken down and a two-story apartment complex was put up. So there have been some minor changes, but nothing significant to the buildings and the lots itself. They were noted, so there, there were some changes in there. I think there were six changes in total, if I recall correctly.
So this has been updated, so when we go into the 10-year cycle, we'll start with a fairly recent?
Correct, yeah, so the properties list.
Okay, thank you.
I peeked over the fence at Filiberto's today, and they have two slabs there and the electrical in, so you can see that it's getting ready to, once they start, that'll go up very quick. Anyone else? Okay, Elan, just down the road, I mean, when this gets, you know, more and more on it, we can expand that, correct? I mean.
Yeah, so redevelopment area boundaries can be expanded or contracted based on, on the needs of the community and the direction of council. So yes, it could be expanded in the future.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation and discussion for vacation of the dedicated right-of-way for the south half of 15th Avenue and Old West Highway. Raquel.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Raquel Schatz, Public Works Department, here to discuss two resolutions tonight for roadway easements. First of all, Resolution 20-09 is an extinguishment of the north half of 15th Avenue from Old West Highway to Wikiup Road, and Resolution 2010 is the vacation of the same portion, but just the south half of 15th Avenue. I'll explain a little bit further on what the purposes of the two different ones are. A quick background on FPEs, these are federal pan-easements that were granted as an act of Congress back in 1938. These FPEs are either on a five or a two-and-a-half acre parcels in the reservation of the right-of-ways of the 33 feet in width of, in width along with boundaries of the said land. So a lot of times when we see, we'll see like a square, and then, then portions of the 33 feet will, are for city purposes, for roadway easements as well as public utility easements as well, too. So just recently, on June 15th, 2020, the Development Services Director, as well as the city engineer, did a presentation for you guys in the public policy implications for long-term transportation planning with FPEs. And this site in particularly falls under the category of the commercial development, redevelopment, which staff recommended as an allowable circumstances where the extinguishments would be considered.
Okay.
So up here is the location of the extinguishment. It is bounded by Old West Highway, Tomahawk. To the north is 12th Avenue, and then you also see Bowman Street. But the portion that we're looking at is the one that's circled in yellow. Resolution 2009 is, in the light green is a federal pan-easement, and in the dark green, which is 2010, is dedicated right-of-way. There's two different processes for the, for each of these easements, which is why they are broken down into two different resolutions. So as mentioned before, 2009 is an extinguishment of a federal pan-easement for the north half of 15th Avenue, and the vacation is for the dedicated right-of-way on the south half of 15th Avenue. Yes, ma'am.
So the purpose is to combine these two lots? Is that the purpose?
Correct, yeah. So, so the owner, Blount Contracting, the, the purpose of their wishing, wanting to do so is so they can combine the lots to do a future development, which they've already been in different planning, PNs, on, on different scenarios of how they like to combine the lots and what they like to put on them.
Okay.
So we just don't know right now as to what, what exactly it is that they want to put commercial sites on and how they want to, how they want to site plan it. Any questions on the map? I feel like I kind of went through that a little fast. So I discussed, I've been trying to keep these two resolutions separate. We've all been familiar with the FPE extinguishment process. However, the dedicated right-of-way has its own process, which we, which in right-of-way terms, we call it vacation. This is dedicated right-of-way in which the city of Apache Junction cannot just gift right-of-way, and there's a process in which, which, that the city has to sell it. And we do so by, we can, we can do it by two ways. We can either get, I'm trying to think of the word. The, the process that we used is fair market value.
Right.
Or we can go and get like an appraisal. However, an appraisal can cost anywhere between $5,000 and $6,000 for one parcel, for one little piece, and they're only good for like three to six months. So in a, in a piece like this, in which, which we kind of, fair market value was determined based on Pinal County's assessor's information, was, was based at, you know, $6,800. So to do an appraisal for $5,000, it just didn't seem like it was going to be time-sensitive as well as worth, worth the value for both parties to do so in this case. So per ARS and city code, we did have to go through a 60-day public notice and sale in which we did so. We posted some signs out there. We also posted in the, in the newspaper and the circulars as well, too, for 60 days. We did have a bid opening in which only one, one bid was received, and that was for Blount Contracting, which submitted a bid for $7,500, which exceeded the city engineer's fair market value price.
So what you're saying is this is a done deal?
Well, not, not yet. Based on your, on, on council approval, then we can proceed with the actual sale of it. Right now, it's just a bid.
So just a question. So let's say that we go through this and we get, the city gets that money, where, where does that money go to in our budget?
I believe in the past, it's gone to Public Works.
We would, we would set it aside in Public Works for our general fund there.
Yeah, it is, it is a street that, that is, does get maintained, and in many cases, it is streets that do, are maintained by Public Works with, with her funds. So in some cases, it has gone to Public Works, although in the case of Old West Market Value, that did go back to General Fund because that was a significant amount of money, so. But, but these smaller ones, I've been told Public Works.
Yeah, so the point- Yeah, so the point is, is that we just don't throw it into the general fund and do whatever we use it for the road, or whatever might need to be done to keep those improved and such.
That is our, yeah, our purpose. So, I, this is just for presentation tonight. I'll come back and hopefully consent agenda on August 18th. Any questions?
I think we've already asked them.
Yeah.
So moving on to the next one, which is the same thing on...
She presented both items.
Okay, we did both, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Raquel.
Council Direction to Staff, implementation of the 2.5% step increase in the budget. Bryant.
Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. Your Honor, about a month ago, you had asked staff to bring back this item in August. During the budget season and budget process, you approved the ability to expend and to be able to have dollars allocated in the budget for a step increase. And you had asked that staff spend some time, and we've had an opportunity over this month to, to review and, and have another month to see revenues come in, and to be able to analyze expenditures. This item tonight is council, opportunity for council to provide direction to staff to move forward in a way that, to implement that step, or to not. From my perspective, I will just give you a city manager's perspective on how the last six months have been. Your city staff are awesome. They have not stopped. When the rest of the world is working on COVID-19, we go, we answer calls, we take the 911 response, we don't know what's on the other side, we continue to sweep the roads, we continue to carry on the work at Parks and Rec, we come, we come up with creative Easter egg hunts, we continue to work at code compliance, we open the doors, we try our best to keep it safe, and there, yes, there is definite anxiety amongst us in being prepared and to be able to keep ourselves safe. As the manager, we, I also have the responsibility as a fiduciary to, to watch over the responsibility of the, of the funds, and I, I can tell you there, we, we are headed towards head of ones, we don't know what's, what's ahead. But, but based on our budget, and based on these extra months and this extra time, I do feel comfortable making a positive recommendation to the city council that we implement the step increase at 2.5%, and to have it retro back to the first full pay period in July. So tonight's opportunity to have that in there and to receive that direction, I'm very proud to call myself a city employee and to work alongside so many great individuals. We will continue to, to keep doing the great work. We appreciate our opportunity to be employed, and we appreciate the opportunity to have to do a great work in Apache Junction.
Okay, I was going to make some of those same comments, and as for PD, just imagine how, how they felt starting into this. Nobody knew what it was like, and they went on every call, and, you know, had to get close to people, et cetera, and they, I don't believe we ever had blue flu out here, and they kept coming to work. And Bryant, and all the other employees kept coming as, as well, like you said, and everything, city business still kept getting done. And I am glad that we did take some time to talk about this, because there was a lot of discussion about, were we just going to pay everybody out of the CARES money? And we settled that in the last discussion, so, would anyone else like to comment?
I have a comment, Your Honor. I attended the MAGG Economic Development meeting this morning, and Eric Anderson, who's the head honcho of MAG, gave some pretty good news. The latest figures they have on TPT is that it's up 2.3%. And he felt that people staying home, they were buying more online, and that was helping. He also felt that the extra funds that were given in unemployment funds were helping, that people were still able to, to spend in their normal way, so that was a positive. We'll see how it goes for the rest of the summer, but that was a positive point.
I've, I've heard some of those same things, too. People are still buying, the, the businesses that got hurt are the places you have to go in person, like our sit-down restaurants. Carryout restaurants still did good, but the sit-down restaurants, the entertainment venues, of course, Planet Fitness has been closed all along, so places like that really need to, you know, we're not getting that, that same revenue there. Anyone else?
I have a couple things I'd like to say. I couldn't be more proud to work with all of our city staff, and I firmly believe that you deserve, hands down, this 2.5%. One of the things, since this has come up, I had a heart-to-heart talk with the chief, and he explained to me, you know, a lot of people think that city employees are overpaid and those easy government jobs, but for our police officers, Queen Creek is starting its new police department. They are starting more than 10,000 above what our guys are paying. I mean, this is shocking, and I want to thank every single one of you that stay with us, and I know that you all love working here like we do and appreciate it, but I think in the future months, we haven't done a police department salary survey, and I know seven years, because that's how long I've been here. And if at all possible, I'd like to begin the process of looking into that, to make sure that we do stay up with the rest of the police departments around us. I think it's very important.
So, you police officers out there, don't lateral to Queen Creek. You don't want to drive down Ironwood every day. Stay here.
It's a mess.
Anyone else?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
In regards to the CARES funding, we had also talked about, I don't know if this is going to be on a future agenda, but we had talked about the CARES funding. The purpose for that was for law enforcement, and I'd like to know if it's going to be on an agenda to talk about hazard pay for our police department.
Your Honor, we're, we're working on that one, and, Your Honor, Councilmember Rizzi, we, we're still definitely looking at that, and that is, that was the single purpose of that, and we have allocated some time to be looking at that. So it's still, it's still there on the table, yep.
Okay, so that doesn't, this doesn't preclude that from happening, it'll, that's something that we can still look at for that specific department.
That's correct, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, then I'll ask for a motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I am proud to move that the 2.5% step increase, which is funded in the approved fiscal year 2020-2021 budget be implemented retroactive to July 1, 2020, be approved.
Second.
Your Honor, let me just clarify, Matt, do we want July 1, our first full pay period? It doesn't matter.
It's the effective, the first full pay period in July, 2020.
Amended to the first full pay period of July.
Okay.
Approved.
I believe Chip, Chip had the second on that.
Gotcha.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
And I'm very proud to say yes as well.
Councilmember Barker?
You bet.
Councilmember Struble?
I can't top that one. Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, most passes.
Selection of meeting dates, times, locations.
Your Honor, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Monday, August 17, 2020, and an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Tuesday, August 18, 2020, be held in the City Council Conference Room and the City Council Chambers located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, respectively, and other meetings if necessary.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak for him and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and replace this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have several. First one is Brian Soller, and we'll need addresses, too.
Honorable Mayor, Council, my name is Brian Soller. I live at 220 East 13th Avenue in Apache Junction. I'm a proud resident of Apache Junction, and I'd like to first start off with thanking our chief and the brave men and women of the Apache Junction Police Department, mayor and council, for passing the 2.5% and then taking it back to the original date. That really means a lot to the police officers. It's a good sign of respect. I also agree with the council member that said it's probably time to do a pay study. I'm from, I work for Mesa, as you know. I said that at the last meeting. Queen Creek is going to be a thorn in the side of all departments, and it is very hard to hire and retain police officers right now, especially with all the anti-police stuff going on in the country. So it's really hard to get good, good quality people, and when you get them, you don't want to lose them. So I would, hopefully you will do the pay study and see where you come in line with everything, but thank you again for passing the 2.5% for all the city employees, and especially for the chief and his, his employees. They do a wonderful job in these trying times. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Schroder.
Little warm in here. George Schroder, 2444, West Virginia, Apache Junction, Arizona. We ask ourselves, why do we have this Black Lives Matter? What's the Democrats in this room? Way different than what we need. Way different than we'll support. The diversity that we need in our communities. We don't have this color, this color, this color, this gender, gay. We don't have them. Everybody needed to ask, why not? They don't feel comfortable out here. Two. We don't need help. Telling the world that we have a bunch of idiots out here. Meghan McCain went on TV and told them, "We have a bunch of idiots in Apache Junction, Arizona," because they don't believe the virus is real. It doesn't matter if you like her. It's fact. It's a simple fact. So we have that stigma, whether you like it or not. Finally. I sent the notice to Mr. Powell last time. Get my wife's name off Republic Waste, Billy. I'm not going to tell you again. I speak five languages. Two English, one Spanish, in case I have to deal with the car tires down south. I speak dog. It's wonderful. They even talk back when I sing, "The coyote serenoid." Oh, their ears go up, it's wonderful. I speak moron. When I say stop, I mean, stop, people, stop. Get my name off of Republic Billy and waste, Mr. Powell, last time.
Anyone need to respond to anything? With that, we'll be adjourned.